All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors on April 15th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Zanger, please.
Ready? Begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and sovereign republic for which its lands, its mission, and its body are invincible, every justice for all.
Takes to acknowledge certificate of posting. Do I have a motion to approve, please?
So move.
A second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, five zero. That takes us to our regular agenda. We'll start with one A, which is receive update and discussion on the Fire Protection Services Ad hoc Committee meeting from April 11th and provide staff direction if desired. And we have interim CAO Henny Ring here.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Yes, today's first item is an update and discussion on the Fire Protection Services Ad hoc meeting that was that it was held on April the 11th. As the board is aware, the county received a 270 day term notice on March 25th of 2025 with the ending of fire services by the City of Hollister, ending date of December 20th, 2025. So we also received on the same day, I think it was, the letter was dated on the April 9th, but we received it in the mail on April the 11th, which was the City of Hollister's proposal again with an increase of 3.9 million for fire additional for fire services, eight percent escalator, and some other details with their proposal. On Friday, both the City of San Juan and City of Hollister met and discussed this latest proposal, and simply we can't afford it. We looked at the numbers, discussed that. At this time, the recommendation is that we would be countering with our previously approved offer, which included the minimum of two O staffing and with the roughly of 1.2 million. So that is where we have left off with discussion. So I leave it with the board now to have any further discussion that they'd like to have.
Just one correction. You said City of Hollister and San Juan. San Juan and the county.
Sorry, San Juan, sorry, did I say that wrong? Sorry. On Friday, the 11th, both the City of San Juan Batista and the county, oh, the county's ad hoc met and discussed the latest proposal from the City of Hollister.
And the fire chief was also in attendance.
That's correct.
So with that, we'll take it to public comment, and then we'll come back to the board for further questions and comments.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Alice.
I don't know how close I need to be. Good morning. Excuse my voice. I had surgery yesterday, so it kind of comes in and out. I just want to say that our firefighters are so important. We cannot cut them to two. That's ridiculous. They have to wait for another truck. It extends the amount of time that we get service from them. If you're having a heart attack, et cetera, yeah, they can do little things, but they can't do the main things that they need to do. Extricate from a car accident. They have to wait for others. We need to do what's right for these guys. They've put their lives on the line for us daily. These guys are working their moods off. We need to respect them. There's got to be a way you can come up with the money. Take away the fireworks. You know, take away vacations. There's got to be something that you guys can do. Don't hire that extra admin. Something has to be done. These men and women are worth it. They're worth every penny. And I think you all know that. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Mia Casey.
Good morning, Supervisors. I wanted to respond to a couple of statements that have been put out in the public by Chair Kozmicki. First, Mr. Kozmicki, you claim that the fire budget is out of control, and you pointed out a 300% increase over, I think, 12 years. This rise reflects inflation and increased demand. And I thought it would be interesting for you to listen to some numbers from your other public safety departments who had astronomical rises during the same timeframe. County probation budget rose by 268%. The DA's office by 297%. The jail by 247%. And the sheriff's department, which is also underfunded, rose by 260%. So while there are comparable public safety budgets in the county that have grown to over 10 million a year, the county's cost for fire protection has sat around 2.2 million, and you think that's too much. Meanwhile, the true cost for county service is much higher. It's closer to 7 million. This contract was known to be inequitable from the start, and capping those increases at 3% has forced Hollister to absorb the rising costs, even as calls for county areas have grown alongside an increase in the population from all of the new housing developments like Santana Ranch that are being built out in unincorporated county. Chair Kozmicki, you also pointed at overtime figures. Most fire departments struggle with overtime rates because they have minimal staffing levels to ensure that we have enough firefighters on duty. So when someone's out or injured, overtime is necessary for safety, and it's not optional for firefighters. It is mandatory. You misled the public, pointing at inflated compensation figures from Transparent California, which include things like benefits and pensions, not just salary and overtime. And you have ignored the fact that some of this overtime is from deployment to aid other counties, and some of that's reimbursed. So these skewed claims disrespect our firefighters who risk their lives to protect us. You've also kept insisting on limiting staffing to two firefighters per truck because it's cheaper. But Cal OSHA and national safety standards call for four. Hollister managed to raise its levels to three per truck, which improves safety and response. Any cuts to staffing is dangerous. Supervisors Kuro and Satello indicated a willingness to prioritize public safety as you go into your budget review. Keeping the public safe should be the top priority for all five of you. Please stop spinning numbers and politicizing this matter, and just work together for a solution that's good for our entire community. Thank you for your time.
Next in chambers, Susan Howard.
Good morning. I can only be here today at this time because I'm an educator on spring break, and that is a sore spot for me in addition to my other comments that I can only come here, but maybe three, four times a year. And I understand that it's a personnel issue that you guys would have to work out to have meetings at night. Those are working conditions that can be negotiated. But on to what is really on my heart today. I'm here to advocate for my school community and other rural schools in the county. I've been an educator in this county for over 30 years, as well as volunteer coach in sports. And as my life is centered around children, that's what I want to speak to you about today. I sent a letter to be read aloud at the last meeting, because like most of your constituents, I was working, just teaching, reading and writing to third graders. But I understand it was not read out. I apparently sent it to the wrong email address, but it's the one on your website. I was reassured to hear, though, that Supervisor Kuro echoed the same concern that I spoke about the night before at the city council meeting, because I can go to those. My question is, how many resources are going to be available if the city has to make cuts to maintain a budget that covers the county without these sufficient funds? With fewer resources, can Spring Grove be safely evacuated along with the neighboring community? They're very intertwined there. Can you get all those people out of their houses and all those kids out of that school? It's about 700 kids, let alone staff. Can you get them out safely? With two on a truck is what's being proposed. Can my school, Southside Elementary, which sits on a two-lane road tucked up against the side of a hill, be evacuated safely with reduced resources? I mentioned these schools in particular because we have the biggest enrollments outside of Aromas, which has a different fire district taking care of them. So you have the two biggest chunks of kids who would have to be evacuated. What's going to happen with reduced resources? So if there's an end to the agreement, what's going to be the plan for children in the rural areas of our county? And what fire marshal will there be if you have an end to this agreement? If we don't, if people say, yeah, two on a truck's not okay, you're going to have to do something different? What fire marshal will we call for safety concerns? And your constituents deserve answers to these questions before an agreement is made. We need to know what to do to keep children safe in the county. And what reasons do you have for jeopardizing safety with two on a truck or ending the agreement? Thank you.
Next in chambers, Joe.
Morning, Supervisors. I'd like to start by echoing her sentiments about the about the meeting schedule change. I can only be, so the meeting time, because I can only be here because currently I'm unemployed, but that won't last for very long, for much longer. The supervisors, sorry, the will of the people. Zanger, I told you earlier that I would be coming back with results for a poll to firmly establish what is the will of the people. And so I asked on several different places, should the Hollister Fire Department achieve people placed on the fire contract negotiation ad hoc committee? First poll had 92% or 92.9% of the people responding yes. The second, this was inside District One, outside District One, for the rest of you guys, 94.7%. Sum total is, sorry, the sum total average is about 93.9%. A second poll, inside District One, three out of four inside District One, and nine out of 10 outside of District One. The in-person poll was 100%. I think we have firmly established what is the will of the people here. And you have now have two choices before. You can choose to affirm the will of the people, or you can choose to deny or defy the will of the people. Those are your two choices. You follow the will of people, and you put the Hollister Fire Department on the ad hoc committee, or you make the decision here and now to ignore the will of the people. And that, I think, would be very telling of what's going on here. Now, I would like to say I thank you for the lobbyist ordinance. That was great and all, and it helped me find out all Boston-based Long Road Energy's application for a battery storage facility.
Excuse me, can you please stick to the subject matter, which is fire protection?
Yeah, it's just probably to what I was going to, to my main point, which is what happens if there's a fire at that facility? What's the plan? I found out about the facility, and when I did, I realized that, you know, realized that we have to have a plan for something like that for if and when it catches fire. You know, Moss Landing has shown that these things are not exactly bulletproof. Well, I guess that's a poor choice of words, but they're not exactly fireproof. They go up sometimes. And I want to know if there's a plan for that. I want to know if there's a plan for how to deal with that lithium and if it spreads into the surrounding areas. I don't know if this is being put in the county or the city, but is there a plan for that? If we come up with our own fire department, and it takes us more than, more time to build that than it does to build this facility, what will be the plan for tackling a potential fire at a potential lithium, lithium battery plant or lithium battery storage facility? I want, I just want to know these, these things as a concerned citizen. But again, the will of the people has been, has been made very, very clear, and you can choose to follow it, or you can choose to ignore it. And of course, there will, there will, of course, be some kind of community response to that. Thank you.
Next on Zoom, Elia, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This, this subject is so important. I am actually literally calling you from the Manhattan in Switzerland. I really need you to support the firefighters. I really need for you to stop politicizing this, and I'm talking to the three supervisors, Kozmicki, Zanger, and Velazquez. You're politicizing this. You think you're trying to pull wool over people's eyes, and we see, we see right through it. You're trying to fear monger and say that you don't have the money. What it is, is that you're trying to put a stronghold and thinking that you're the better negotiator and trying to strong arm the city and placing San Juan Batista into the same situation. It is completely wrong of you to do that. The people have spoken. The people are talking. You don't, you're not looking well in the public right now. And as the previous speaker says, you know, your, 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 have, your, your actions have responsibilities, and your responsibilities have actions. And right now, you're not looking good. You need to stop fear mongering. San Benito County does have funds. Let's stop paying $25,000 a month for a CEO consultant that doesn't show up to any meetings, doesn't show up to the county. Maybe he's making a phone call or an email, but I doubt that. Stop spending money. I would like to see the supervisor, Kozmicki, Supervisors Zanger. You've said it before, and especially Supervisor Kozmicki, you tried to say how the supervisors had given themselves a raise before, and now you're a supervisor. I would like to see you voluntarily take a 40% rate decrease. Take a pay cut. You want departments to take the cut? The fire department is very important. Take a 40% pay cut in your salary. Why don't you show some, show some responsibility, show some action, and show that you have, actually, you have the will that you want this county to succeed? Because so far, all your actions are making this county fall into a deeper and deeper hole, and you don't seem to care about it. You seem to think that you have the politics because you've been elected. But, sirs, let me tell you, the people are speaking, and people are gathering together, and it's not looking good for you. And it doesn't matter about a recall or no recall. It's the actions that the people will take against you, and you've, you've lost, they've lost faith in you, and they've lost respect in you. I ask you to continue to negotiate with San Juan Batista, the City of Hollister, and stop your fear mongering. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments.
Chair, I have one thing.
Yes.
Sorry, I meant to add this. There was, with the letter from the City of Hollister that we received last week, there is a new term with the letter with a date of May 9th of 2025, a demand deadline for a one, a payment of 1.25 million, 50,000, sorry, 1.25. So I forgot to add that piece, but I wanted the board to know that as well.
Yeah, appreciate it. So again, 1.25 million retroactive, and the 3.9 million dollars going forward with eight percent escalators annually was basically what Hollister wanted. And we met and reiterated, we can't afford that. And we would be countering with our previously approved offer. So bringing it back to the board, questions, comments? Does anyone want to start in particular? Either go one side to the other, or I'll, Supervisor Zorro?
I really don't have anything to say, because I think I've said everything that I've, I mean, I feel like I'm repeating myself over and over. I want us to find a way to have three O staffing. I know money is a challenge, and we're not able to afford the ask that's coming from the City of Hollister. I'm still supportive of the ad hoc from the City of Hollister, the ad hoc from San Juan, and the ad hoc from San Benito with the fire chief represented, and, and any other entities that, that whether it's the interim CAO or the city managers, and really coming up with explaining and having the conversation of what can we afford to do? And what can we do to achieve the three O staffing and not reduce services? I'm, I'm still hopeful that that will happen, but besides that, I haven't changed where I stand on any of this, so I don't want to keep rehashing something that you all know where I'm at.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Just, again, we did meet with City of San Juan Batista ad hoc and the chief to discuss these issues. I think the agencies involved in those discussions agreed we cannot afford a $3.9 million increase. Can't. You can't take away vacations from our staff throughout the county to try to fix a problem that should not be here today. Said it before, I'll say it again, issuing that first 270 was the worst thing the previous city council, previous mayor Mia Casey could have done to our community. Bad fiscal management by the former mayor Mia Casey, the former council, does not, should not, put the burden on this county to talk about laying off others. It's not right. It's not fair. And I'm thankful that we did meet with San Juan, had a very good discussion. We all realize it's a very difficult time. We don't know what's coming down the path here from federal dollars, or the recession that I'm sure is coming at us. It's coming quickly. So we have to make sure we're protecting our financial interests in our community in this county. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Zanger.
Well, yeah, I'd just say, like Supervisor Kuro, I don't really feel the need to rehash everything. It's all kind of been said, my position's out there, so unless there's something that changes, I'm, I'm good for now.
Supervisor Satello?
Thank you. I think I've got a couple of questions. One, are we being asked anything today? Or is it kind of, is this just an update? Or are we actually going to be voting on something today?
Do you want to take it?
Yeah, it was just to discuss what the last week's meeting was, and then any direction if there's, if any.
Okay, so just really kind of an update?
Yes.
And, okay. And then I'm curious, I appreciate, you know, the ad hoc committee meeting and working with San Juan Batista. Just curious, I know you mentioned that the fire chief was there, but was the union president included in this conversation as well for the fire department?
No.
Okay, because I thought that was one of the things that, or maybe that was just the City of Hollister, and so I was thinking that was the direction that would be moving forward with kind of all of the ad hocks included. So, okay, yeah, I mean, I agree. I'm not changing my, I, I understand the hard position that we're in, but I really feel like we need to get into budget. We really need to kind of really take a hard look at everything. I, I don't think we can afford the 3.9 million with the eight percent escalator, but I do think that we owe it to this community to do everything we can and to turn over every single stone. So right now, I'm not changing my position on anything. I still think that we have to go with the three O staffing. We've got to figure this out together. And so I know it's hard, and I know it's a really tough position that you, our ad hoc committee members are in, but I just, I hope that we can continue having conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And just again, to clarify, I'm going to keep it brief as well. The, we did invite the City of Hollister ad hoc. We invited the San Juan Batista ad hoc and all relevant staff to the table. The fire chief was there. San Juan ad hoc was there. County ad hoc was there. The City of Hollister ad hoc was not there, nor was City of Hollister staff. We did invite them, and I think they made it clear that they're not interested in negotiating from that $3.9 million number, which I'm hearing that none of us on the board believes we can essentially afford. So we are where we're at. And I just, real couple of quick things. It's, it's the cost increase for a community that does not have this budgeted, and what impact that would have on our overall budget, but it's also the trajectory of where this fire department budget is going. I think there needs to be a very serious actuarial analysis done of the trajectory of the budget and an audit done of really what's causing the budget to increase at the rate it's increasing. That's another concern. Other than that, we also have, right after this, I think it'll be made very clear that the county does have a very serious budget situation, and I'm on the budget ad hoc as well, and we are going to be looking at significant cuts, even if we didn't have this fire station, our fire department issued to address. That's all I have to say. And other than that, I'd entertain a motion to, if we want to give direction to move forward with the ad hoc's recommendation. Do you have a motion to?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
You have something further? Go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to clarify what you were saying.
The ad hoc's recommendation is to counter with the previously approved offer of two O staffing with the dollar amounts that have been approved.
Yeah, move is stated.
And we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
Supervisor Kozmicki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
No.
Supervisor Kuro?
No.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Three, two vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. And that would take us to our second item on the agenda, which is 1. B, receive and accept presentation on the status of fiscal year 2526 county budget, provide staff accept presentation on the status of fiscal year 2526 county budget, provide staff direction as necessary and review and adopt 2526 budget policies.
Just one minute. Let's get set up. Thank you.
We're getting all prepared, so just please bear with us.
All right. Well, good morning again. Henny Ring and Aram CAO. Today's special meeting is to provide the fiscal year 2526 budget update. With me presenting today is Rebecca Campbell and Dulce Alonso, here to give you an update on our fiscal year budget and what it's looking like for 2526. First, I'd like to introduce the budget team. As many of you might be aware, during the budget process, we have a new budget officer, which is Dulce Alonso, and also a new budget technician, which is Lorena Moreno, back here in the corner. And so they came on right in the middle of all of this, so congratulations to them. Also want to introduce Rebecca Campbell, who is currently extra help deputy county administrative officer. Also, former budget officer Ramona Bond, who is now the deputy director of behavioral health over fiscal and administration. I think he's here in the back. Also, part of the team is senior administrative analyst Gracie Rodriguez and Sonia Lycans and Cheyenne Torres, administrative office assistant. Also, part of the team is senior HR analyst Elvia Barosio and HR analyst Rosie Justo. I also want to thank the, this amazing budget team. Without them, in this stage of the budget, we would not be here. So a lot of hard work has gone in so far. I also want to thank San Benito County department heads and their teams and all the work they have done so far as well. In addition, I would like to thank the board supervisors and the budget ad hoc for their feedback in the process and direction that has been provided. So, thank you. All right. So we can go to the next slide. All right. So through the budget process, we develop processes, basically, and it takes several months in planning. First, we start with the board's priorities for the year. And then we kick off the budget process and with the detailed budget instructions that are sent out to departments. This is the guidelines on assisting with developing the budgets. The deposit, the departments create their budgets, their requested budgets, they put that into the system. Administration develops a recommended budget and then we hold a public hearing to go over the recommended budget for adoption. In the fall, the books close and then we return to your board to close out that budget. Throughout the year, just so as you're aware, throughout the year is ongoing oversight of the budget to ensure that we're operating within compliance and that we're staying within the budget that's been adopted. Next slide. Today, or, excuse me, the budget timeline has board dates, so we'll kind of go over that, which is where we're at today. Again, on January 28th, the board adopted the board priorities. Today is April the 15th and then that's the yellow box that we are there today and we will be giving you the update. On May 13th will be the recommended budget for the CAO that will be introduced. Also, on May 13th, human resources will be presenting a vacancy report, which is part of the SB 2561, which is a new requirement. This requirement's a public agency to present the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts at a public hearing and it's at least once per fiscal year. And when titled the, what entitled the recognized employee organizations to present at the hearing as well. If the number of job vacancies within the single bargaining unit meets or exceeds 20% of the total number of authorized full-time positions, this bill requires that the public agency, which is us, to, upon request, to have the recognized employees also be provided presentation during the public hearing. So that's just a new requirement. So I just want to add that in there, that that's going to occur as well with the recommended budget. And then on June 3rd will be the budget hearings and we will review the recommended budget in more detail. Next slide. Again, on January 28th was the board's priorities, which as you can see there is housing policy reform, general plan, affordable housing and other options, road improvement, homeless encampment and which included trash cleanup, which actually the cleanup will be occurring in the next coming weeks here, and tourism and economic opportunities and revenue as a whole. Next slide. A lot of planning goes into input of the budget. And one of the things, there was many things that we consider as part of that budget planning process. Information is gathered from advisory groups for input, board action that has occurred throughout the year, information from committees and ad hocks, community input, et cetera. So one of the examples that is used for the budget process is a strategic plan. There's five components of the strategic plan, which also assists the budget to ensure that the budget is incorporating those areas. As you can see there, and you're very familiar with what our strategic plan is, we have operational and development excellence, planning for sustainable growth, we have technology, community engagement, and last one, which is health and safe communities. As we proceed through this budget process, you will see that these are considered in the, as part of the consideration for the budget. And so you'll see the strategic plan is incorporated in that. So now I'd like to introduce Rebecca Campbell, who will continue with more information with more detail to the budget update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ring. Good morning, members of the board. Rebecca Campbell, deputy CAO, extra help, here to help with the budget process this year. So we kicked off the budget process in January of 2025. We submitted out the budget instructions and training was also provided to departments. Admin met with all of the departments and we reviewed their workforce plan and we also reviewed all of their costs and their budget and talked about their budget. Due to the process this year, we asked departments to do year-end projections for fiscal year 2425. That's the current fiscal year. We wanted to do that to help us to project our fund balance available. Fund balance available represents money available in the current fiscal year at the end of the year for use. So it's the leftover money, money that wasn't spent or additional revenues that came in. And we roll it to the next fiscal year as a funding source. For the general fund, it's a significant funding source. So we asked them to do those projections this year. They hadn't done them in a number of years. In previous years, the annual comprehensive financial report was used with the actual fund balances from the June 30 prior year, and that's what they use for fund balance projection. This year, we wanted to do projections, actual projections, so we could get a level of accuracy and improve that. We knew going into this year that we were going to face some challenges with costs and revenues, so we asked departments to submit a 5% decrease in their budget, in their requested budget. So where did we end up? For governmental funds, we ended up at $339.4 million in appropriations. However, today we want to focus on the general fund. The general fund includes $107 million in expenses or financing uses, 70.6 million in revenues and 29.8 million in the fiscal year 2425 fund balance available for a total of 100.5 million. Therefore, we are showing a gap at this moment in time at 6.6 million dollars. It's important to note that in this requested budget for fiscal year 2526, that salary levels are at current levels. They do include step increases, but there's no increases for, for negotiations included in the budget. We did include the pension rate increases that are projected to go into effect July 1 of 2025, but we did not include health rate increases because those will come out in the fall. We wanted to just talk about significant factors that are impacting this 2526 budget. Variances from fiscal year 2425. We've had constrained revenue growth, but the good news is that we are having growth on our property tax of 6% projected by the assessors office. Thank you. And we also, overall, we have 4.9 million in revenue growth from last year's adopted budget for your, for your discretionary funds, your taxes, but sales taxes flat. So that's the good news. Looking at cost increases across the county, liability and workers' comp, 1.4 million dollar increase. Those charges are based on experience and exposure of claims. And like other agencies in the state, the county is experiencing cost increases in this area too. Other post-employment benefits, we're looking at a 1.8 million dollar increase across the county. And those are based on paying the actuarially determined contribution based on actuarial recommendations. Salary and benefits compared to last, this current fiscal year, a slight decrease. Reminder that the budget does not include the health insurance rates and it does not include negotiated salaries and benefits. County fire protection startup costs, we did include an increase to fire based on recent board meetings, but it remains to be seen where that will end up. Information technology, we included new ongoing costs of $1 million and 200,000 for two years included in the budget. And those are for deferred, there, there are network upgrades that need to be done that have been deferred for quite some time. So we included that in the request. We also have a franchise fee correction. I did get word this morning, that's actually 1.6 million. We're going to look into that and, but that is based on a fee correction. Those funds were deposited in error into the general fund and they need to be paid back. We'll be looking into that and see if we can pay them back over time or what, what we need to do with that, but just wanted to inform your board. Also wanted to note that the requested budget includes the rollover of $5 million for the Hazel-Hawkins Hospital and San Benito Healthcare District Joint Powers Agreement Project. So the county is a subdivision of the state. We have a lot of state and federal programs, a lot of revenues coming down from the state, probably about half of our revenues come from the state. So anything that the state does, there could be impacts. So we definitely pay attention to that. We wanted to take a look and the governor's January 10 proposal came out and so we wanted to give you a short recap on that. The state budget was 322.2 billion dollars. The state budget, they've been dealing with a deficit and so this budget proposal includes 7.1 billion to close that gap of one-time funds after their budget stabilization account. A few things that were included in that budget that may have some impacts on the county. The climate bond, there was 2.7 billion allocated in fiscal year 2526 in the proposal. And so some of the programs that are lined out is 325 million for fire prevention and resiliency grants we'll be watching, 231.5 million for dam safety and reservoir operations, 37.6 million for irrigation systems and farms and ranches, grants related to that. And then there's a number of proposals going through the legislature right now that we'll be watching and, and communicating on if we need to. Behavioral Health Services Act, Prop 1, the budget includes 93.5 million for counties to continue implementation of the act. There's also reductions to pay for Prop 1 in the Mental Health Services Act fund. So the department is including in their request some reductions related to that to pay for this. The shift went from Mental Health Services Act prevention programs to now housing programs and stability programs and wraparound services. So we'll be working with the behavioral health department on that one. Okay. The budget includes 47.1 million for behavioral health activities, 18.4 million for public defender activities, and that's related to the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowering Act, or you call the CARE Act. This went into effect a while ago, but the county had to start operating under the CARE Act in December of 2024. Prop 36 passed in November, so that shifted off misdemeanor crimes back to felony crimes related to drugs and drug use and theft under $950. So that will likely have an impact on our public safety departments and that remains to be seen. The January 10 report also did not include, there weren't, the state budget right now doesn't include impacts related to the Southern California fires. And initial estimates, just in the insurance, was over $20 billion in insurance losses. So we'll have to see how that impacts the state and how that trickles down to the county. We're also awaiting to hear more about federal program impacts. There's been a lot of news every day and we're watching that. So as of right now, we've heard about health and human services impacts of 11 billion dollars to public health COVID-19 grants. We have some of those grants, so we're watching that one. But right now, 23 states have sued and that's tied up in the courts. So we're watching that one and we'll be on that one to see what happens. Also, potential impact could be some homeland security and FEMA grants. We've gotten notice on, the state is dealing with that and we do receive those grants as well. So we are, will be closely watching that to see how that could impact our services. We also have local impacts related to the budget. San Benito County Measure A was passed in November of 2024. It's a land use redesignation that removed the commercial regional designation from certain sections of Highway 101. We'll have to see that, how that impacts, you know, economics and revenues and things like that for the county going forward. Measure G passed in November of 2018. This was a one cent local transaction and use tax to be collected over 30 years to improve our local streets, roads, improve connectivity and reduce congestion. Because the Highway 25 improvements required pre-funding, Measure G agency apportionment, so including the county's apportionment, went on pause starting in this current year of fiscal year 2025 for the next 10 years. And that is in order to pay back those upgrades on Highway 25. Okay. So I'm going to pause here and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Alonso, Ms. Alonso, and she's going to finish out the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. So on, on this slide, you see the requested position summary. And starting with our current fiscal year 2425 staffing levels, there was 665 positions that were adopted through the, the county budget process. Of those, 17.5 were unfunded, bringing the total funded positions to a total of 648. So, so take that as a starting point. And then looking at the new requests that came in, we had 663.8 positions with 36 positions being unfunded, 14.8 positions eliminated and 11 new positions were new requests that were, that came in. So our next steps are to evaluate further and make adjustments before the CAO recommended budget is presented. But these are just the numbers that came in as requests. And then final position recommendations will be shared at the next meeting for board's So moving to policies, I want to highlight, there was an attachment of policies that was included in the packet that included a combination of things. Some of the policies in there were rollovers from last year and I want to focus on the ones below that, that were new, new ones. But these, as part of the budget development process, we met with the budget ad hoc members' committee. We also met with each individual board member and we integrated valuable feedback in, that we received from those discussion into the draft discussion you have before you. So we, we are seeking formal direction on, on incorporating these policies in the CAO's recommended and in the budget process going forward for, for the rest of this year. So with the new one, we'll start off with general fund. So something new that was added is general fund shall not subsidize any grant type programs. And I'm going to read the actual language that we included, that's new. So bear with me. So the general fund shall not subsidize the loss of grant programs. So the general fund shall not subsidize the loss of grant programs, state and federally-funded programs, et cetera, unless authorized by the Board of Supervisors. And notice of any cancellation of these programs shall be provided to the county administrative office or immediately upon notice. So we wanted to add this to ensure that the general fund remains focused on the core county services. And if grant funding ends, the county should reassess the continuation or look for alternative fundings for the program rather than relying on the general fund to continue the programs. So the next one is we incorporated Proposition 172 allocations in the operating public safety budgets. And the language we added there is to incorporate Proposition 172 funding into the county's departmental operation budgets. And I think Henny's going to add something more.
Yes. And part of this is, this is just the Prop 1, so it's a budget mechanism that's to provide transparency. So we'll be working on that as well.
The next new item we added is to incorporate the Mello-Ross District, or also known as CFDs, annual revenue into the operating budget. So the language we incorporated for that is incorporate the annual Mello-Ross District or Community Facilities District into the county's operating budget as determined by the physical impact and service level analysis, Joint CFDs of July 2018 report, and also as allowed by law. And then the final new one that was added is vacancy budgeting. So this policy encourages departments to eliminate and manage their personnel needs more accurately, and it also is intended to help control costs. So the language we incorporated, you'll see under human resources in the policy, and it's to ensure physical responsibility and workforce efficiency by managing full-time equivalent positions. Vacant unfunded positions, so any positions that are vacant and not funded shall be eliminated from the schedule of authorized positions. These positions may not be retained for future use or rehiring unless the funding is identified and requested, is approved by the Board of Supervisors. So the next bullet point addresses, any positions that are vacant longer than 120 days shall be submitted within writing requests to hire for review by the county administrative officer. The authorization to fill a vacant position may be approved or denied by the CAO. If denied, the position may be recommended for deletion at the next budget cycle with approval from the Board of Supervisor. Public safety or safety positions are exempt from this requirement. In times of financial difficulties, a hiring chill may be authorized by the Board of Supervisors for implementation by the CAO. So these policies are reinforce financial discipline, transparency, and sustainability. With the board's direction, we could incorporate these into the current year's framework. And that is all I have on that one. So next steps, Henny touched base on kind of the, we've already, the board priorities, the kickoff meeting. So I want to touch base on where we are and kind of for our next meeting. So March through May is going to be administrative review, where county administrative office reviews submissions and meets with the departments, compiles a CAO recommendation for the board's consideration for May 13th. I want to highlight that in addition to the public hearing regarding the Senate Bill 2561, we will also have the auditor's office do some presentations that day regarding other post-employment benefits, so OPEB obligation actuarials, and as well as transit occupancy tax, and we'll cover the cost plan as well. So following that date on June 3rd will be our budget hearing, and then in the fall, we would bring a recommended budget for the boards to adopt. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, all staff members involved with this. A lot of work going on here. We'll take it to public comment, and we'll come back for questions and comments.
If you'd like to make, excuse me, a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, Mia Casey.
So I'm glad to see that Prop 172 is being paid attention to. Mr. Cosmic, your idea of an audit for fire, I think frankly, there needs to be an audit of that fund and other things for the county to really see where money's going, since there was 20 million that came in over the last four years, and we really can't tell where that money has gone, and even your staff hasn't been able to figure that out. Sorry. So I know we keep talking about the fact there's no money, but you know, what I've noticed over this past year is that millions have been approved for things like a riverbed cleanup, which while I appreciate the sentiment behind it is close to a half million dollars, and it's not going to solve a homelessness issue. And in fact, it just shoves them into the city, who then pushes them back out into the riverbed. So there's a half million dollars you could be putting elsewhere. The hospital JPA is still sitting out there, 5 million dollars, and there's a 6 million dollars for repaving San Juan Canyon Road, which is a low-traffic road. There's a lot of areas where you could reallocate funds. And honestly, I don't want to see a single penny spent on tourism until you can start guaranteeing people's safety. I really appreciate Supervisor Sotelo and Curro's wanting to reprioritize and find money for first responders and public safety, and I hope the rest of you will follow suit and try to find some funding. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Barbara Thompson.
I just wanted to note that this is written as a private citizen on my own time and does not reflect the opinions of the county council's office. I did the research for this over the weekend. I know it's a difficult budget year, and I wanted to address to a couple of the budget policies which may have an effect upon the board. I recognize the county's always been very fiscally conservative, and it's good to have a large reserve for many different reasons. The proposed general fund reserve policies call for about 20.46% of the annual general fund budget for reserves. This is a commendable goal, but many California counties have adopted reserve targets, targeting minimum levels of 10% to 15% of expenditures, and an optimal higher targets of 15% to 20%. The general, I'm sorry, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum unrestricted general fund reserves of 16.7%, which is two months of operating. Riverside County has a reserve policy of two months. Butte County calls for reserve and contingency equal to 10% to 15%. Sonoma County sets a minimum policy of one month, which is 8.3, and a goal of two months, which is 16.7. Monterey County has the goal of 10%. Yuba County has the proposed reserves of 15.9%. Butte County has the goal of contingency, I think I might have mentioned this one already, 10% to 15%. And I was suggesting to the board that you might even consider, and I know that this is a policy decision, whether or not 17%, which would be a very fiscally conservative policy, would save approximately 3.7 million dollars. The other thing that the board might not be aware of is the PAR's rainy day trust was established initially. It had a $3 million infusion, well, that was in 2016. Its current balance is 39 million. Part of that's funding the OPEB obligation, but part of it was set aside for a rainy day trust. And the board was informed on May of 2016 that this rainy day trust could be accessible for pension obligations whenever you see fit. So it was both, you could use it for the ongoing pension obligations. It can either pay the pension obligations of yearly needs on that year, or the county can pay it and it can get reimbursed from the trust. I collected, I attached two slides from that May 2016 date. And then the last thing I wanted the board to consider, a hiring freeze, which there's been a number of positions that are still being advertised for and that recently closed. And several other counties and cities in the California have already implemented a hiring freeze. And I suggest that the board supervisors might want to consider that and just consider positions itself about whether they should be exempt from the hiring freeze. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have one on Zoom. Elia, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes. You need to unmute yourself on your end.
Okay, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I stayed muted instead of unmuted. I apologize. You know, the previous speakers all have some really great things to say about what can and should be done. Again, you might laugh at the fact that, you know, I'm telling the two supervisors to take a 40% cut. I mean, they seem to have, you know, been making fun of and, you know, were very negative towards the supervisors when it went to a full-time position. And, you know, both of them have never made as much money as they are making now in their entire careers. So 40% cut would be nothing for them because they're used to making that much money down in that bracket. You know, you hired a county council, and you thought you were going to save money, and...
We can't hear you, Elia. We still cannot hear you. Well, I don't know why she's lost. She's unmuted, but she's not there. Okay, so I have no further public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the board for questions and comments, and we'll start with Supervisor Sotelo this time, if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that worked so hard on this. I appreciate it. I'm excited to dive in. I'm really appreciative of how we're doing this kind of differently this year. I'm just curious, on the, let me get to it, the board, the proposed budget policies, were these the budget policies that were put together by the ad hoc and with staff? And are we considering, I mean, these are obviously things that we're considering to put into as a policy for this year. These are considerations. Am I understanding that correctly?
So most of these were what was on there the prior budget cycle? And that the ones that are new ads came from conversations with, meeting with each individual supervisor in addition to the ad hoc?
Okay. I mean, I appreciate some of the thoughtful considerations that went into this.
Hi Supervisor Sotelo. I also want to add that we did go over the new policies with the auditor, just to make sure that there weren't going to be any auditing issues or financial issues created by implementation.
Okay, great. So these are considerations. We'll be voting on these in the future. Am I understanding that correctly?
Today.
Oh, we'll be, okay.
Because we'll use these as guidance for the recommended budget that the CAO brings forth.
Okay. And the auditor is in agreeance with all of the things that are being proposed today? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. You know, I don't have a whole lot more. I mean, I think we just, I appreciate some of the things like the Prop 172. I think it'll just clear up some of the misinformation that's out there. Yes, we may have received 20 million. However, we've probably spent, I don't know, over 100 million. So it's a little inaccurate to think that we just have gotten 20 million dollars and it's, we're housing it somewhere. Like, it has gone towards public safety. So, but I think this will make it clear for the public, so I think that's good. So it's going to be a challenging year, and I appreciate some of the things that Barbara just gave us. I think those are important to consider, and I'll be looking at kind of those and what that means as we move forward. But I appreciate the beginning of this process, and I look forward to seeing where we kind of get by the end. So it's going to be a tough year. Thank you.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you guys for all the work everyone involved. Really appreciate it. So I guess just to address some of the budget policies, I'm really supportive of all of these that were laid out. I think that's great. I think particularly important is the general fund shall not subsidize grant-type programs. So I appreciate that being there and being cleared up. And I would just say, we need to make sure we're paying attention because of course, you know, we don't want, you know, within the department to be, move money around and fund it, and then general fund fund the core services that they've since moved money from. So we just need to be really cognizant of that and make sure that in one way or the other, the general fund isn't subsidizing the ending of grant-type programs. So I don't really have much to add. Like I said, I appreciate the work. I'll just say, I don't think it needs to be a budget policy, but just for us here in the public, we all just need to acknowledge, I think, that it is very responsible to use one-time pockets of money for something that's going to be an ongoing yearly expense. And so we need to get that idea out of our heads, I think, because we need to make sure that that is not happening, because that's obviously just a recipe for disaster. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else at this time.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Thank you. Supervisor Sotelo, you're absolutely correct. It's going to be a challenging year, but I'm grateful for the work that's been done. I've seen budgets much, much worse than this and dire straits. I think this is a, we're at a point where we're actually catching things early enough to start turning around the future of this county. So I do appreciate all that work. I will say that one thing that, to me, is incredibly important we're going to work on is find that professional lead this budget process throughout the year so we can get quarterly updates and keep us on track, because all the miscommunication and is working hard to help us through this, we have to make sure that this is an absolute priority. It might seem like it's going to cost us some dollars, but the amount of dollars it saves us in the long run is really critical. And when we have the ability to look back five years, 10 years, see where we've been in the past, where we're going, it's going to help us project better for the future. And that's something we have to be much more conservative with. As I said, we don't know where we're going with the federal money. We're pretty sure recession's coming, and we have to address that. And I, you know, the projections are 100 million. We have to understand it's probably not going to come in. It's going to be much less than that. But I think together, working as a team, we can do that. This ongoing misinformation about 172 money, 20 million disappearing, it doesn't disappear, it's actually about 4.2 million dollars coming in per year that goes into public safety, and that's exactly where it goes. The only difference I think we'll be making is addressing by percentages in the future. But whether we gave 100% to one public safety agency this year, that means we have to make up the others through the general fund anyway. So it's just, it's a lot of misinformation, unfortunately, by certain people that come in here. It wasn't 20 million that disappeared at all. It's about 4.2 million coming in. So we're going to address that through percentages, we'll go from there. Other ideas that came through, I'm glad to hear about the PAR's rainy day trust. But there's a lot of work, as I said, that has to come through. But again, the staff and everyone involved has been working forward on this, and I think we're going to find a way to make this work.
Supervisor Curro?
Okay, I have a couple of questions, and I do want to thank all of the staff and the department heads for all their work on the budget and administration. We do all know how much effort it takes to get to this point, so please don't think that we think it just magically happens, because we know it's very, very time-consuming. And you guys are really diving in so much deeper than we have historically, and I really appreciate that. And I do see a little glimmer of hope and light that we're going to have some future policies in place that will help manage the budget, just like Supervisor Velazquez said. You know, giving out quarterly reports on budget is going to be something that, it's definitely something we're all in agreement that we need in order to be good policymakers. But with that said, I do have a couple of questions, because I have been searching, and I haven't done a formal request to the clerk of the board, but maybe this could be... I haven't done a formal request to the clerk of the board, but maybe this could be my formal request. We have an OPEB funding policy, correct? That was adopted by the Board of Supervisors? I'm looking at Joe Paul. Is there a written policy on funding OPEB?
Joe Paul, did you want to come up? Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Sorry, Joe Paul. And I started with you. I shouldn't have started with you. Thank you so much for coming up and being here today.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. Your question is, is there a written policy concerning the, the boards wish to fund the actuarially determined contribution annually? Yes, the board has taken that action in, in previous, at, at, at previous budget hearings. And at this, on May 13th, you will have another opportunity to, to determine if you would like to continue to have, to fund the actuarially determined contribution or to simply do the pay-go costs associated with retiring healthcare.
Is it possible to get, I'm, I'm assuming that policy was adopted many years ago by the board, the prior board? Can we get a copy of that before that May 13th meeting?
That would be held with the clerk of the board?
So I'll, I'll do it through the clerk of the board. Yes.
Oh, yeah. In fact, Rebecca just pointed out that one of the operating policies for, suggested for the fiscal year 25, 26 year is to continue to fund the actuarially determined contributions for OPEB as determined by the county's actuary.
The other question I have, and I think, well, maybe it is, you may have to answer on this. The cost plan. And when we're looking at budgets for departments and we know that your outside consultant does that very detailed report that gets all those costs out to those departments, but those impact the budgets of every single department in the county. How is that happening with the 5% request for reduction? If the cost plan is increasing for all of the expenses for the departments, how is the 5% being reduced? Thank you.
Rebecca Campbell. So we are working with departments. Departments did their best to include the 5%, but as you pointed out, some of them got hit with extra charges or not, you know, just increased costs.
A huge increase in cost plan.
Increased costs related to cost plan.
Which, just so everybody knows, two years in the rear, so it's the cost from two years ago is rolling over to current. It's just that is an impact that they can't manage. So...
So I would say that not all departments got to 5% reduction. They did their best and we're still working with them. We still have, we have a lot of work to do. We have, for the next three weeks, we will be grinding down on the recommended budget. So we'll be looking at those things and we'll be doing our best to bring it in line so we can balance the budget. But I would say that most departments got to 5%, but not all because they were hit with charges and things like that, workers comp, cost plan, whatever charges that they receive.
And I think maybe this is a question to the ad hoc and to you, Rebecca. Are we looking at unfunded state mandates by department and looking at how much those unfunded mandates are costing and pushing back and considering pushing back on the state on programs that we are not being funded to do?
I would say that each department is.
Okay.
You know, they should be looking at that and we will discuss that with them. Nothing's been brought, you know, to our attention as of this point, but we will include that in our discussions.
That would be great because I think we're to a breaking point in our budget and in our finances that if we don't start making it perfectly clear, because I keep having these conversations at CSAC and there's a lot of counties out there that are in agreement with us, we cannot keep funding state programs. It is, it is crippling county government and I know you know that firsthand.
Yeah. And I would point out that is why we added the policy statement related to subsidizing state and federal programs, grants, et cetera.
And I agree with that completely. So I appreciate that. You stated Rebecca that the sales tax is flat. Can you explain why? Because I'm a little confused how the sales tax can just not have increases.
It's nearly flat. We just didn't see a large increase in what we're receiving this year. I, I just...
Can you kind of off, you know, roughly, how much are we getting a year-end sales tax?
I can give that to you in a minute.
Oh, no problem. No problem. I'm just, I'm just curious, what's that number looking like and, and how do we, how do we promote people to buy things in the unincorporated area? So this budget policy is a fresh, brand-new budget policy or is this a red, is there a redline version of this that we could get?
We can, we can get that for you.
I looked online.
But really what it is, it's a streamline of the existing policies. There were a couple of policies at the top where that were directly related to fiscal year 24, 25. We removed those and we included the four new policy statements.
Yeah. If we could, if I could just get a little more background on it just to educate myself. I feel like I don't know enough about the history of prior policies and how we're changing it now.
And I apologize, we should have included that. You can find the existing policy on our website under the budget for recommended budget. If you click on the recommended budget under admins departmental page, the existing policies are right there for you for fiscal year 24, 25. But we can, we will draft up a redline version for you so you can see exactly where for changes.
That would be wonderful. Have we started, or the ad hoc for budget? Have we started to maybe look at, we know interest rates are really high right now, but we're hopeful that maybe interest rates will come down again. We had a, we didn't. The prior boards had a presentation and Supervisor Cosmickey, I think you were on the board at the time, when they did that presentation about bonding, doing bonding for roads and if we had a really low interest rate, how we could fund roads on a, on a like more massive amount to be able to focus on roads, but then pay it over time at a low interest? Is that something that maybe the, the ad hoc could consider bringing back as a conversation? The presentation was phenomenal. I think in 2021 is when it was presented, but I'm not really sure. That could, that's just a, if you'd consider.
Do you, am I...
Sure.
Yeah, certainly we have discussed this. I think it was actually more on the, the road ad hoc side and we looked at just financing options and we're continuing. I know Dulce and staff are continuing to monitor interest rates optimistically that they will come down and continue to come down. We don't obviously have, you know, can't predict. But, but yeah, it certainly is something that we'll focus on and look at as we go forward. Go ahead Dulce.
And I just want to add, we had our consultants K and N draft, or we, we could reach out to them to see if they can do a formal presentation on what current interest rate is and what it would take to bond, but we did have that in the past in their...
And what we have to do to be prepared to pull that trigger so that we're not, all of a sudden interest rates drop and we have this opportunity, that we're actually like prepped for it and we could do it at a future time.
And is it, sorry, can, as long as we're on this topic, I would advise if staff could maybe provide the rest of the supervisors with the, those, we had some basic numbers of kind of estimates of...
We had them with preliminary initials.
...money we could pretend chilly.
Yes.
Thank you.
That would be great. The other thing is why are, why are we, and we haven't met in some time as an ad hoc on the hospital, why are we leaving the $5 million in there?
I can answer that. I was going to address it in mind. I think it was just as the foundation as we start to have a discussion among board members to see where the rest of the board was at. I'm certainly in favor of pulling that out.
Okay, great. I just wanted to see where you were going on that.
Supervisor Curl, just to get back to you on the sales tax. So in fiscal year 24, 25, adopted budget, we budgeted $3,082,783. We're projecting to receive $3,030,000, so less. And for next year, we're budgeting $3,068,000.
Yeah. Over, over, over projecting, conservative projections are our friends. Over projecting are not our friends because we always end up paying in the end.
So it's actually going down.
Yeah, okay. Maybe that's a conversation that we can have in the future about what can we do to, and, and why is that happening? I just, I, I'm trying to educate myself on that. Also, do we have a reserve written policy on reserves?
We do. It's included in your budget policies.
It is in that one. Okay. So I know where that one is and I have that one right now.
And the good news is, is that we've met the reserves.
Okay.
We're, you know, it may, you know, everything's fluid and it fluctuates and it's calculated off of the, the expenses, the total expenses, but at this point, you're pretty much there.
Okay. Okay. I think that was it for my questions and I just, again, thank you for all the work and I appreciate you hearing my feedback, Joe Paul.
If I could just make a correction to something a member of the public said concerning the PARs trust. Yes, it is correct that $3 million was set aside years ago for the purpose of putting it in as a rainy day fund exclusively for pension obligations. And, you know, that, that fund balance, I don't know exactly what it is, but it's between four and $5 million right now. It's not $39 million. And I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that that's not available. Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And just to answer the, just to reiterate, I guess to answer the question about unfunded mandates, I think Rebecca alluded to it, but we have, I think, at the ad hoc level and discussions with staff made it clear that we'll not be offsetting subvention losses with the General Fund. I think that for the most part addresses, I think, your question. The other, we can't really control what the state, and I certainly would have opened a dialogue here, but I can't really control what the state actually mandates us to pay. But the areas where we do have discretion, I think it's important that we identify those and make it clear that...
I, sorry to interrupt. I, I'm, I'm curious if we would get bold enough and start really pushing back on the state and saying, no, we're not doing it. I got one.
Yeah, so...
I'm sorry. It's a conversation I'd love to have. It's not for today, but I think we need to start looking at what programs are we being asked to do? What is really helping our community and what's not helping our community? And how can we push back? Because it, it only is hurting us. And that data, if, when we're either at CSAC or RC, RC, even at NACO, if we're at those conferences and have that kind of data, we can really have some great conversations. And being on that Government Finance and Affairs Committee, I really, I'm making this a big deal at that level.
Yeah. And I would just suggest that if it's okay, when we get to direction, that going off what Supervisor Curl is saying is for us as a county to identify the areas where we do have unfunded mandates. Obviously, a lot of them are subventions, so there would be subvention and if we could really hone in on the General Fund, if we have General Fund mandates and, and then there's, the other part of this is that you have, and we've talked about this, that even when there are subvention programs, there are costs to the General Fund and we are going to work on recouping those eventually, but maybe until we get to that point, it's going to take a couple of years, I believe. Because that's the requirement, we're working through that, where we can recoup those costs. Maybe hopefully we can identify them in the meantime and see what we can do to address it.
100%.
Yes, of course. And then bonding, we, we talked about bonding. And then I just want to reiterate, it's so important to underscore this again, the one-time versus ongoing expenses in budgeting. And, you know, there's, there is a misperception. It can be easy to, to look at reserves and say, why aren't you spending those, you know, on ongoing expenses? Well, it's, it's just government 101. It's wholly irresponsible to spend one-time money on ongoing operating expenses. The reserves are meant for emergencies and one-time expenses like capital needs. And if you spend reserves on operating expenses, it's just logical that you eventually run out of those reserves. You don't have a reserve in case of emergencies anymore. And eventually you have to make cuts to those operational areas where you put the reserves. As far as the homeless encampment cleanup, again, that's a one-time, hopefully a one-time, at least that big number expense. It will be ongoing to a certain level, but the community has made it loud and clear to us that that also needs to be a priority. And it's about $350,000, not $500,000. And then Prop 172, again, I want to underscore as well that all of those dollars are accounted for. There's a lot of misinformation that's being thrown around on social media in particular. Those dollars do go to public safety departments. We can account for all those dollars. There's no money sitting anywhere for us to just pull money from somewhere magically. So I would appreciate it if, if the conjecture on that would, would halt because it's just not healthy to put out misinformation on these matters. And then ad hocs continuing to work with staff advising on a lot of the things we discussed today, the policies, I think are all very responsible. I appreciate all the dialogue that's happened so far on this. I would encourage all the supervisors to provide feedback on areas of the budget they would like to see addressed so that we don't just have an ad hoc that's working through this, but all of us are involved. And there is more to come. So we have the policies today and, for instance, the vacancy budgeting policy is going to be a significant step forward. I've been asking for this, calling for this since I've been on the board. It's been alarming to me that we have not addressed this issue and what this, just in late terms is, I think we had a 27% vacancy budget last year. So our, those positions are open, we're budgeting for them, but we're, you know, essentially all those positions, all that money can be, a lot of it can be put back into the budget if we eliminate those positions that are not being filled. And so it's something that we have to do at this point and I appreciate it. It seems like there's a willingness to move forward on that. But there are other areas. We mentioned, I think we need to have a discussion about the hospital. And there, and there's a list of things that we've started to talk about at the ad hoc level as far as how we can chip away at this budget and get this thing balanced. We will balance this budget. Okay? This is not a situation where we're in some sort of a dire straits. We are going to balance this budget. It's just, it's going to be a challenging year and it's going to be painful and to an extent, but we are going to balance this budget and make logical cuts in order to make sure that we're being responsible. And moving forward, I also appreciate all the work that's being done by staff to help straighten this thing out, improve our processes. We have short-term, we have long-term. We're starting to work on those things. Once we get through this budget, it's going to be important to really make it a priority. The organization, the process part of how the budget works, the communication of the budget, and of course, as mentioned, the quarterly reports need to be absolutely required going forward. So that's all I have to say. I support the recommendations here on the policies and would entertain a motion unless there's anything further.
Mr. Chair? If, just before someone makes a motion, I would just suggest maybe we as a whole or the budget ad hoc, just to follow up on what Supervisor Curl brought up and what you brought up, just really take a look at some of these departments that are, have a lot of state, state requirements, state funding behavioral health, HSA, and really find out what is required and what is not required that we're going above and beyond for and maybe we can adjust some things. So I just would hope that everyone can, we can look into that as a group or the ad hoc and figure out exactly where we are with the state. And I would support as well some serious pushback. I don't know, I don't know how that looks or what that does, but I, of course, I would support that as well.
Great. I just, I did want to make a comment about the sales tax and you're going to see in the county a decrease over the next few years because of housing starts. So some people might feel that what's happening, our sales tax is falling as the construction starts slowing in our, in our county area, that's why you're seeing that decrease. So that's not actually a bad thing. That's actually a good thing in, in the long run. So that's why there's probably the decrease there.
Anything further? Go ahead Supervisor Curl.
On the policy, with the budget policy for vacancies and the C O being able to, I guess, deny filling of positions, historically, we, we know and you know, and you've been working really hard on it since you were hired here, is dealing with the hiring challenges. Are we going to be writing a policy that will be addressing how, because of that SB, what is it, 2561, and how we're going to... And how we're going to try and fill positions? Because, not to say, it puts a lot of, it puts a lot on HR. Because if the positions aren't getting filled and the policy is to get rid of the positions, is it because we can't get the qualified people? Or, I mean, do you see where I feel like it's a little bit of an impact that we may not see how it will really hurt us until we actually implement it?
Yeah, so how I see it is, as we go through it, now that we have to incorporate this new SB 2561, is it's going to be a documentation of what that looks like. Because is it a recruitment issue? Is it retention issue? Is it, you know, is it just a vacancy issue because you can't find the right qualified person? So I think as time goes through, we'll have the historical data that we could kind of look at and document that piece. And some, because some of it isn't going to be the same position, has the same historical, you know, recruitment issues as another position. So it's just going to be a matter of kind of compiling that together. And then if we write a policy, I don't know if a flat policy would cover everything. We may have several different things depending on what type of position it is.
That totally makes sense to me. I know it sounds kind of odd that, it really is. It depends on the position. And some of the positions are vacant for a longer period of time. Doesn't mean we don't need the position. It means we're unable to hire, and what are we going to do in those cases? And how departments are involved in that decision-making?
Yeah, and I think that's why it goes about recruitment and retention. It has to do with, it's, there's different formulas for different positions, right? Public safety is different, has a different hiring practice than like an office assistant or even maybe a mid-level management. They require different things. So I think as we go through, we would be able to, maybe we'll do a policy at some point, but it'll probably have criteria in there to kind of.
Kind of some tiers, sort of thing.
Tiers, give us some flexibility too. Because sometimes when you write policy, you got to follow policy. And it doesn't always apply for everything. So I think it will be customized as we go.
And the reason I'm asking this is because when I read this policy, I kind of read it in the lens of a department head and was like, ugh. This means that you can take positions away if they're unable to be filled. But the departments don't actually go through the process of the hiring in the sense of, they're not doing the recruitment. So making sure that we have that collaboration between departments and HR on what the needs are. And because some of these positions, if they are cut, will be critical positions. And I'm just worried about that in the future.
Sure.
And we can have an offline.
And I think it's partly too, is like, one of them, one of our situations here is we have vacancy budgeting, right? We have a lot of vacant positions. And are they truly vacant because we can't fill them? Or are they just there as extra positions?
Right.
Right, so as we go through, I think that's when we'll be able to capture.
And I'm very supportive of getting away from vacancy budgeting. I hope everybody knows that that's not healthy. It's not the way to budget. So, and it causes other issues. So I appreciate all that. And maybe we can continue the conversation offline. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. And I just want to reiterate, so it's very clear on the record that the vacancy budgeting policy would exempt public safety departments. They would not be included in that. Anything further? Go ahead.
The definition of public safety, is that written somewhere so that it's very clear what falls under safety and public safety?
It's listed as safety, so it'll be those that are like a CalPERS safety.
Okay.
Position, so that's what we list.
Just so everybody's aware, what does that mean? Because you can say you're safety and not fall under safety. So, thank you, you guys.
Great. Have any further direction? We've had, I think, good dialogue. I don't think anyone's necessarily disagreed with one another on anything substantial. So the staff should have pretty good direction going forward. We'll take the ad hoc back and try to refine some of this. Again, encourage other supervisors to also provide feedback. And then we have, of course, the policies here themselves to give direction for approval on those. Rebecca?
I would just ask, is the Board comfortable making a decision as far as direction on the hospital today? Or is that something that should come later when we bring the recommended budget?
Does anyone want to start?
I'll start from the ad hoc, because I'm on the ad hoc. We got to help ourselves before we help others. You know, put your mask on first before you put your child's mask on. Our plane is going down right now, and we need to put our mask on. So I say we need to keep that $5 million and allocate it to what we need to keep moving forward.
Supervisor Velazquez?
I would say we're experiencing turbulence now, but the masks have not fallen. But I would agree with you.
I agree as well. I said that. Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, I'm not going to do the, I'm not going to continue the airplane analogy, but I would also just exit.
Come on, Doc, you can do it.
Supervisor Setello?
Yeah, I'm supportive of us removing that as well.
Thank you for the concurrence. We'll make sure it's not included.
Appreciate that. And do we have a motion for the policy into this, whether to approve the recommended policies? So moved. So moved. We have a second?
I'll second.
Person's second, all is in favor, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
5-0 motion passes.
Thank you very much. That would bring us to the end of our item and take us to adjournment. And we will be coming back on May 13th, I believe, was the next date for our next budget update. So thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, staff, everybody that did all the work that went into this. Anything further?
I think that's it for the day.
All right, we are adjourned.